Yes, sir Vice Mayor, thank you. District one, Councilman Reals.
Here.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Here.
District three, Councilman Latham.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Here.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Uh Vice Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you, Shelley.
Oh, and for the record, uh, Merrick Marrow is excused tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, could you lead us in the invitation, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this day, and we ask that you bless this meeting and the decisions that are made. We ask that you bless those who are ill with health, with health, and those who are hurting with comfort. Thank you for all our many blessings and the hope that you bring. We say these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Shelley. Freddy, can you lead us in the final?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Senator Navas. Mariano, we'll start with you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have two things. Uh, yesterday, I went with the fire chief to inspect a ladder truck down in Phoenix. And this is the same model that we, uh, looked at up here. This one, however, is ready, almost ready for delivery to Prescott Fire Department. And, um, once again, I was impressed with the quality. There were a few bells and whistles that were added. I shouldn't say bells and whistles. They were practical items that will make that truck very, very, uh, efficient up there in Prescott. So it's nice to, to take that tour and, uh, look at a few things that they've added to that truck. So that was a good trip. Yesterday evening, I had the privilege of providing a dialogue with the Cobra Valley Youth Club, of which Fernando is on the board of directors. Two facilities, and they're, they're working very hard to provide a, uh, safe environment for the children. And I didn't know, number one, that they had two facilities, and number two, that they're really working on a remodeling of those two facilities. So I invite the public to look into that as a place for youth activities. Uh, there's two sites, and I'm, I'm impressed with that. So, uh, on another, a project, uh, I had to make a presentation last night. And it was also the first time I got to use my brand new guitar that I purchased. So it was the first time I got to use it and, and present it. And it was a very enjoyable evening. And yesterday was a very long day. I went a bit early after that, so. Yeah, even though I'm retired, I, I can get tired, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Fernando?
I have a couple of things. So, uh, once, um, I'm also on the community college board, um, and we did get our candidacy status, which means we'll be an independent college, and everything's going really, really well. And so it's just really exciting to see that we're going to be able to choose our own direction, our own destiny. I think it's a great thing for the community. Um, and it looks like all of our instructors are planning on staying, and all our programs are moving forward. Nursing program is different because it has to be approved by the state. There's a state governing board over medical things, and so. But they've been working with us and moving really fast, so we, we're hoping to be able to offer a nursing program, um, this, uh, August, starting this next fall semester, so it's looking really good. Um, another thing that, um, I don't know if you know this, but during the day, I'm a State Farm agent, and so I deal in insurance. But we have House Bill twenty-two oh-one, and what they're trying to do, the utility companies are trying to limit their liability. And we just had a meeting where they were looking at mitigating for wildfire. So I don't know, I think you attended, Mariano attended, and then several of the staff attended. But they're doing things to make sure that they protect us from wildfire. They're trying to be proactive. But, and that's what this legislation is kind of putting into language. The problem that we have with it on the insurance side is, is that they're also removing themselves from liability. Okay, so liability is either when you did something or failed to do something that causes injury, damage, or harm to someone. Okay, so, and normally, so if, like, so if lightning hit, it hits their pole, it causes a fire. That's not their fault. That's an act of God. Insurance takes care of that. But if they fail to maintain the pole and now the, the line falls and it causes a fire, then they would be responsible for that. And so the problem with this legislation is their mitigation is great, but they've also put in there that it's clear and convincing evidence. Okay, so if you're gonna be tried for murder, it's beyond a reasonable doubt, not clear and convincing. If you're getting sued for financially for something, it's the preponderance of the evidence, whichever has the most weight. So this is really not good, and that means that insurance companies may pull out of areas that have wildfire danger, and then you might not be able to get insurance at all. So this is just something, I'm not opposed to the mitigation part. It's their liability part that's an issue for us. So just wanted to let everybody know that, that that could really affect all of us, so.
So are we gonna bring that up in another meeting, possibly?
Um, well, it's not something that the city would probably be too worried about, but I, I do worry about it regionally. We're already having a lot of companies pulled out of this area that won't write here. And, and so, um, and so the more and less and less choices you have, it may depend on the consumer. And that's House Bill twenty-two oh-one. It already passed the House, so now it's gonna go to the Senate, and they have this process, so there's time. But if you call your legislators and let them know, hey, this is concerning, great on the mitigation, but what about the liability?
Thank you. Freddy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, just kind of tag along on that, uh, on a personal note. When my house insurance renewed, it went up dramatically, so I called my, my insurance, insurance agent. And they explained to me that it was because of where I live, not where I live, what street, but in the, be in the region I live in. And it had to do a lot with the fire that we had four or five years ago. So, uh, I can attest to, uh, Councilman Shipley's points. You know, we're all impacted by, um, individuals that make decisions that you're vulnerable or you're not vulnerable. Uh, so, anyway, it's something to be aware of and, and get involved if, if you feel the need. Um, on a, on a lighter note, um, I did attend the, uh, the public meeting, uh, that, uh, Healy Community College put together. Uh, and Fernando, thank you for, for being a part of that. I know it was a lot of work, uh, just following it. Uh, but for us to have in, uh, a, uh, community college, independent of, of any other colleges, and having to be mandated by, you know, their, whatever it is that they're mandating, you know, the, the, um, whatever, uh, educational needs or, um, academics, uh, you know, we, we have that ability here now. And I think the most important part that people should know is that they are very transparent, the board, the president, the board members. Um, they even offered, uh, and you can look at it, the, the Healy County, uh, schools, I'm sorry, not Healy County Schools, um, Healy Community College, they have a website. Um, you can navigate through there. You can see what meetings they had, what they talked about. It's very transparent. So if you wanna get involved and interested on how this all came to be, they're very open about, uh, how, how we got where we are today. So, um, educate yourselves, and, and you'll know that this was a work in process, and there was a lot of people, a few people that did a lot of work. And so, congratulations for that. Uh, and hopefully, uh, you know, that's a big part for, for our community here in our region, right? To have a community college in your own hometown. That's really impressive, you know? So hopefully, we can keep that going. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Freddy. Mike?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, this weekend, I had the opportunity to go to the summer youth performance at, at High Desert Middle School. And those kids are putting it on, uh, the Jungle Book. And it was really a great production. The costumes that they use is really the best. Who plays, is a character in there. And so we were there, we've gone to several of their performances. And if you have the opportunity to go, they have one more performance on Friday, the fourteenth, at seven o'clock up there. It's really, really good. You might enjoy it. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to express my heartfelt condolences to San Carlos Siamchee tribal members and family of Emily Pike on their profound loss. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Uh, I just have a few things. I'll blow through them quick. I think I have seven, right? I was at, uh, my, uh, CrossFit class. I joined CrossFit six weeks ago. Love it. Danny goes with me. But, uh, I, one of my constituents, uh, approached me and said that they hike Round Mountain twice a day. They do. And, uh, she was concerned about the gate, because they bring people in wheelchairs, walkers and what have you. And, uh, they couldn't get through the gate that was originally there, so I contacted John. And within three days, maybe, they had a new gate cut up for him. Has a nice latch, and the whole thing swings wide open now. She was jumping up and down for joy. Thank you so much for taking care of that so quickly. It was like, wow, this is cool. So thank you. And then, uh, another shout out to Eric. Back in, uh, SAP, I had another constituent, uh, having a problem with the trash at the Oyo Motel. And it was, they had a big roll, but I guess trash is flowing out of them all over the place. And, uh, Joe Stapleton, actually, from Bonnie's, was cleaning out there every day, rolling it out, sweeping it. And I got contacted Eric, and he went over there and talked to him and problem solved. Done. So thank you, Eric. I appreciate it. Then I, uh, wanna just announce that the Hill Street Apartments, I read on there that there's only thirteen available apartments left as of now. So that's cool. I mean, I think a few weeks ago was twenty-one. Yeah, so they're dwindling down real quick. Uh, then just a reminder, the US sixty road closures, same story, different week. March eleventh through the thirteenth, full closures ninety-two. And then a reminder, Coffee with the Mayor. I've been attending that with him every month. It's the third, uh, Wednesday, uh, at one o'clock. This month, it's, uh, March nineteenth, at Copper Cities Coffee. And that's where, uh, you can come out and speak if you have any concerns or questions. You can talk to the mayor and myself about any questions or concerns or upcoming events even. Uh, the first time we had a, I think we had four, maybe five constituencies. Uh, last month, we had twelve to start the bill, so it's really cool. And even people sitting there while we were doing it, like, hey, what are you guys doing over there? I think it's gonna grow, so if you wanna come, it's, it's really cool. Uh, then again, a shout out to Public Works. I think I brought this up last meeting about clearing out the creeks and the washes. Man, oh man, what a job. Now you drive by there and there's, it's wide open, so we're ready. And that's, thank you for coming. So, thank you, John. Pass that on to your crew too, okay? And then, uh, lastly, uh, Globe Clean and Beautiful is doing their downtown cleanup, April eleventh through the thirteenth. And today, staff walked downtown to get a list of ideas for volunteers, such as painting handrails, uh, benches, planting flowers. And then Steph is also getting rid of damaged or obsolete signage. And, uh, let me see, something, then planting, uh, and then new trash cans. They're even gonna, uh, start cleaning the light poles downtown. So volunteers are desired and wanted. If we, have you had fifty, did you say, Linda, already? So, and this is the flyer that we have. So they're gonna be posting these downtown and all around. So if you wanna help, uh, sign up, I'm sure you'd talk to Linda or anybody, right? That's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, uh, just to add on to the, the spring cleaning event, the, um, the, the free dumpster locations for those three days will be at the dog park, uh, behind the teepee, our, my personal favorite location, um, Ash and Mesquite, and, um, six twenty-one Fifth Street. So I think those are, we're continuing those standard locations, but everybody kind of knows the spot, but people who know, uh, that's, well, they have the four dumpsters. Uh, metal appliances, um, uh, metal, uh, different types of appliances, tires, front, electronics, batteries. Um, as I said, batteries go to the dog park location only, and refrigerators with Freon, we cannot accept those. We can't do anything with those. So please save them, or, I don't know. There, I'm sure there's another way to get rid of a refrigerator. Yeah, so. I don't, um, but, but we will not accept the refrigerator. So, um, the, the food tax bill, um, HCR twenty-twenty-one, uh, was, was modified, and, uh, is modified to the point where, uh, cities who have existing food tax that is over two percent, um, if this bill is passed by the voters in, in twenty-twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven, that election cycle, that they, we will retain what we've already put in place. Won't be able to raise it, but, um, but they will not, um, move it down to two percent. It, it, there was a version that was passed that it would require us to lower it to two percent. And, um, but they'll keep that. And, and I do, didn't have it on this meeting, but we will come back and have a discussion, kind of, why that matters again. Because, um, we have very, very low property tax, uh, because the food tax is, uh, like I say, it is shared by many of the people who travel to and stay here and, and head out to the lake. Um, also on the, um, the twenty-two oh-one, the APS, the, the League of Cities has gone neutral on that. It's kind of, it's kind of a fifty-fifty toss. But we may have a, we, I know we'll be having future conversations in a public meeting with APS about fire mitigation in general and, and everything that's going on this, and to get ready for the season. So we will have an upcoming, uh, event. Also, I was in contact with BHP, um, their hauling project, uh, where they're mitigating the tailings dam. They've been, they've been trying to haul Monday through Friday. Um, it's just with the closure on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's been kind of awful. And so, uh, they're actually gonna be bringing trucks up on Saturday now. Um, but I, I, it hasn't really been a, a big, um, you know, I think inconvenience for everybody. Everything's been going pretty well. And, and so we're this, I think the sooner they get that project done, the better. And so they, they did, they did check with us, and, and we're like happy that they're, to allow them to come up on Saturday. We haven't heard any, uh, any negative from, from anyone on the BHP hauling. They seem to be doing a good job. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the First Community Call of Public. Disappear any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda. May do so at this time. Uh, this is a time for the public to comment to members of the city council explicitly, not to members of staff. Comments will be limited to three minutes, and you can, uh, pick up a card and, uh, hand it to Shelley. Shelley, do we have any cards today? No, nothing online?
Not seen anything, no.
Perfect. Fifteen minutes, Freddy.
That's the goal.
Next on the agenda is special presentations and ceremonial matters, presentations, proclamations, awards, guest introductions, and announcements. Uh, three A, annual economic development update. We have Melissa and Linda.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, I'm excited to present our economic development annual update. The progress over this past year has a lot going on, and I'm excited to show what's ahead for twenty-twenty-five. We have been fostering a thriving business community, growing tourism, and ensuring a sustainable, economic success, success for Globe. And I do feel like we have done that in twenty-twenty-four. So our year in review, we have business engagement and retention, business expansion, new developments, um, tourism and marketing success, and shop local, shop local and community events. We are so excited to see businesses like Copper Cities Coffee, Selena Smoke Street, and even a teenager. Um, I know I'm gonna slaughter her business name, because I just can't pronounce things, but K- Ketsal Agua Fresca. Um, thinking their next steps on whatever that might look like to them with their expansion or moving into brick and mortar businesses. We have started the year strong by partnering with SBDC to provide transaction privilege, privileged tax classes to nearly thirty small businesses. Um, we provided consultations and registered fifteen unique Start Grow Revive SGR workshop attendees. We connected four businesses to funding grants and resources, and we helped six businesses throughout the year navigate licensing and permitting. Um, as you can see, I had to make the businesses really small, because we had thirty-three new businesses start up this year. It's huge. Um, seven businesses either expanded or transferred ownership. Through tourism, marketing, it just continues to be a powerful driver of growth for our economy. And with visitor numbers and spending just skyrocketing, um, you'll see that later in the presentation. Shop local and community events, we were a merit award winner through A A D. I counted up the numbers for this presentation, and I was surprised to see we had sixty-six point five thousand attendees in two thousand twenty-four. And that's just in First Fridays. That's a nineteen point five increase of people visiting downtown in two thousand twenty-four compared to the previous year. And we're also proud to present, um, Banwango. We did a test kickoff. And then for twenty-twenty-five, we're gonna start our, um, digital historic downtown trail through Banwango, which I'm sure you guys will be excited about. We can do things through the phone that will have historic photos, give you digital buildings, um, give people prizes for actually going to see those buildings. And then we'll actually have them stop in and shop Globe in more exciting trails like that. Anything to add?
I would say this, this answers, uh, Vice Mayor Stapleton's multi-year request that there be a history on all the downtown buildings. So this is kind of a digital walking map for visitors and residents to use and find out what specials are being, uh, presented at local businesses, and businesses could do all the updates. And so they can update it on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, however often they'd like to, to do it. And so this is gonna be really a fantastic addition to our, our BRE program and really drive.
We, it's trackable, so we can see how many people are actually looking into those plaques, their digital plate. There, we can see how many people are shopping there, and then we can see how many people are actually interested in getting the prizes and how many people are going.
And it's available for, not just for our downtown businesses, but for all businesses in the city.
Everybody, yeah.
I have a question. Are they gonna be at, uh, businesses like we talked about, or are there just gonna be couples spread out around town, or?
So it's, it's a virtual, uh, it's an app that you can download to your phone. And so then as you go through, you can, you can see the history. Say you're in front of the CBS building, and you can pull that up, and it'll tell you all the history of different businesses that have been in that location over the years.
You can have historic photos, current photos. Um, you can put historic stories if we want to. We can do whatever we want to with the location, and it's location-based, so as soon as somebody's in that spot, it'll show them what we want it to show them. Very cool. It's a very cool program.
Are we gonna have a rollout with marketing, a marketing campaign to roll this out?
Yeah. It comes with the program, so they actually give us some of the marketing tools for that. And then, um, I plan to go crazy with it, because it's gonna be both for tourists and locals, so it's, it's gonna be a big one. Rural Business Development Grant, we did work with R C A C on the RBDG grant. The Michelson Building, we had, it's one of our most exciting projects. It's still in the works. Great things take time. That's what I like to keep reminding myself. As you know, it's a co-working and incubator space designed to support small businesses and startups. We did work on this grant, which included setting up a budget and program plan to set in place. And we found that we will break even within twenty-four months, um, of our budget for this, this project.
And that was actually utilizing the footprint of, of what was there, but now that there's been a turn of events, some environmental-ish stuff going on in the building, that all the interior walls, which are non-load bearing, will have to be demoed. So now, now we can move forward with the footprint that will maximize the space. And, and of course, it may bring us to, uh, being in the, out of the red much sooner than twenty-four months.
When do you anticipate this to be done?
I would say it'd be aggressive to say eighteen to twenty-four months. And we, we do have a meeting tomorrow with our, our partner, the county. And so I think we'll, we'll have a better idea in the next, uh, in the next sixty to ninety days, what that timeline looks like.
Fernando?
So when you say break even, I assume you mean that it's gonna pay for its own overhead. It's gonna pay for itself, not pay for the building and all the investment?
Exactly.
Um, just, we're not giving up on it. One of our small business owners, while we were working on it, they were so excited about the opportunity that this fight space will bring, just in tools and resources alone, but also. But also for the um mentorship and being able to network within the building also. And so I just wanna remind that the opportunities within this building are worth worth the wait. So we're we're not giving up on it. Okay, me- measuring economic growth, um I have a whole bunch of data coming at you guys, starting with tourism foot traffic and lodging. And this is um from the Dean Runyon Associates, that's part of our Arizona Office of Tourism Bi. This one is. Very, very interesting, overnight visitor volume, we saw in two thousand twenty-four ninety-seven thousand five hundred visitors in Globe in two twenty-four. Direct travel related spending thirty-three point four million, which was a five percent increase from the previous year. Direct earnings was ten point nine million, a ten point nine percent growth from the nine point eight million in the previous year. Direct travel related employment, we gained about five jobs, um which is a one point five percent increase. Local tax receipts generated by direct travel related spending totaled about two million, which is a nine point six percent increase. Visitors who stayed in a hotel, motel, or STVR um contributed contributed nineteen point four million of visitor spending. A five hundred and eighty-two point four thousand or three point one percent increase compared to the previous year. And my favorite data point, I put a little larger there, travel spending contributes approximately five hundred and fifty-three dollars per resident household. In the local tax revenue. So each household for our residents here get about five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Does this account for our increase in taxes that we did, the four percent increase?
No.
The one percent upgrade? No.
No, and it but it does count for our, we have less room inventory with the loss of Dream Manor and the loss of the Oyo. So even continuing to see this uptick with, you know, without seeing that increase in the sales tax revenue and the loss of rooms, this is this is huge. So when oil goes back online, when the hospitality project gets built at Marigold, that's just gonna these numbers will skyrocket. Councilman?
STVR, what is that?
Um like RVs.
RVs?
Yeah. We did lose um many hotel rooms, we were still suffering the loss of Dream Manor, Hotel Six, the Economy Inn, um Oyo. And but we still have visitors staying here and spending more money here than we've we've seen. Likely they're staying with friends and family or staying at Airbnbs, um BRBOs. But that's not trackable and likely not being taxed under the bed tax. Um so that's why we're not seeing numbers under the bed tax. Um but they are showing real growth, um just not in bed tax revenue. But it is showing growth in job creation and community impact, so. Looking at our tourism website traffic, you can see it does dip down a little bit, we expecting that. That is because we don't market as hard during that time period around February. We are about to market again for spring, Poppy Fest, it's going to come back up. Um and we do expect to. With the next Arizona Office of Tourism Bi, give our website some new love and replenish and give it some some fresh. Some new marketing freshness to it, so. But we did reach eighteen eighteen thousand there, it's peak. Uh social media, I wanted to give you a peek at each of the different social media outlets that we're managing. So City of Globe, Go to Globe, which is the tourism, and then Economic Development. As you can see, all three of them are in the green, we're gaining followers for all of them. And sixty-eight percent for our tourism, that's how many we've gained in the last year. Just huge, huge numbers. This slide is just to show you how different the social media pages are. As you can see, City of Globe page is PSA's information, um maps. The Go to Globe page is very, very tourism based. And then Economic Development is very business based, that's a one of the classes that we did for Start Grow Revive. Sales tax, bed tax, and property tax, this is just an overview from two thousand sixteen again to two thousand twenty-three. Um each one of those colors is the sales tax, bed tax, and property tax. As you can see, they're pretty in line with each other going going up. Always good to see that. This is broken out into more detail. Two thousand twenty-two, sales tax. Two thousand twenty-three. The ones on the end, the line is our projected um budgeted. And then we have calculated out what the projected amount would be. Yep.
Fernando?
So uh do you differentiate between the the difference in the data between just the increase in prices? So prices went up, so therefore sales went up? Or is do you factor that out and see that?
So yes, that is taken into account, especially because this is done by one of our our firms that we work with. That cost factor is is taken into consideration. And that was actually something that we did a deeper dive because when we first took a look at the property tax growth, it's like, oh my gosh, this is it it does not make sense. But af- after digging in deeper and taking into consideration the number of new builds that we've seen, um improvements that have been permitted. And with Hill Street going online, that just now that's generating uh property tax revenue that it wasn't before. That explains that type of growth, but short answer is yes, that is taken into consideration. So it's a real, it's it's a real glimpse as to what's going on.
Use the actual actual numbers, except for the two thousand twenty-five projected numbers, which we calculated out.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, just the the property tax growth is is the the holistic growth. Um we have not adjusted our rates on the on property tax and we do not intend to adjust our rates on on property tax. Um so but it as said, the the values go up and uh new construction comes online and the new construction is unreal.
We've we've seen more new builds in the last two years than we've seen in the last fifteen years. So that has that explains a lot. And when when we were looking at that numbers, I thought, oh my gosh, how are we gonna explain this? It's because uh the everyone will think, oh my gosh, the city went and raised property tax. It's like, no, no, that's not what happened here, that's. We can explain it through growth.
Um measuring economic growth again, business openings versus closures. This is looking at real numbers, I went through with the licensing administrator and counted every single opening and closure that we had in two thousand twenty-four. Um as you can see, we had many more openings than closures, like I said, we had thirty-three openings, I think we had seven total closures. Um and many of them were just re- retiring, so. Good, good signs. Challenges and lessons learned, uh my top business challenges identified mainly through the. Survey.
Survey.
Survey that we did recently for the SAP. Uh rising costs of doing business, limited usable commercial space, light. Um and then the licensing and permitting, we're just going through growing pains as we're trying to get more information, more data. Um how we're addressing these challenges in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna do more outreach and support, business friendly initiatives, expansion and workforce development. Marketing and community engagement and more data and more benchmarking.
So kind of just to touch upon the the limited commercial space, I mean, we we all know, yes, we do have some empty buildings, but many of them are kind of being held on to by by the current owners. But there are there are local people that are have this as an opportunity. And so they they've taken taken that opportunity and purchased some older buildings that haven't been opened in over a decade and they're putting in office suites. I mean, one for one is is the former Copper Hen Building. Yeah, Roy is, he's putting in uh three additional suites, so it's it's good to see that someone's coming in. And he's not the only one that's identified that this this is a we're and it's in high demand. And so he's here to, he and others are here to meet that demand.
Um so what's next, twenty twenty-five goals and priorities? We do wanna see that we expand and strengthen our business retention and expansion efforts. We want to formalize a business outreach program. Our goal is to reach five to ten businesses per month. Create an online resource hub and newsletter for businesses, that's already in the works, it's part of the new website update. Enhance digital and tourism marketing, further develop Banwango, as we mentioned, a visitor and local focused gamified app with prizes. Um expand content marketing, again, feature local businesses in the newsletter, social media, and website. We want to further attract and support small businesses. Some workforce. And further support those businesses. Measure and track, I didn't finish typing right there apparently. Measure and track further economic data.
Go ahead, go back, I just wanna mention something that that our staff has been working on. So you know, we're hearing from small businesses, large employers, that data is a huge issue as to why people are not going to work or back to work. And so we, you know, we are definitely working on getting the former Head Start location up and running again. But what what's low hanging fruit and that's that's helping those those moms or parents at home stay home and and be accredited. So that they can bring in kids and generate a revenue or yes, a revenue for their or income for their families and being able to stay home. So we've been working with First Things First and Easy YMP and Freeport to to offer these classes with the SBDCs. And these have been offered online and I think there's been four four. That have been able to open up in their homes and bring in other children so that those parents can go to work. So that's that's one avenue, so it's, you know, on the micro level, but then definitely on the on the. Scale is getting uh those those type of youth activities out there as as um Councilman Gonzalez had mentioned, the youth club. Uh in downtown Globe, the uh former Tim Taekwondo building has sold and that's going to become a youth center. So that that'll be exciting to see what that um the services that are offered there. Uh martial arts will be part of what's offered there. And facets that that our community needs in order to keep our kids safe and occupied. And parents can feel good where their where their children are and about going back to work.
Somehow Linda just reminded me um that we are also working with developers um and site selectors, we've been working with them for a while. And we're con- continuously searching for oppo- opportunities, I think that's how the connection was made. Um and we've been using Placer AI to give them information that they need, so we give them foot traffic data. They get traffic information, how many people are traveling through a certain location, is this location of interest to them?
Are we viable?
Are we viable? Um one of them is, we gave a QSR, which is a quick service restaurant report. To somebody who is looking at us as a potential place that they wanted to. And we were able to give them information on our McDonald's and we found out that our McDonald's is the number one location for sales in the state. And number six in the nation.
Probably not as good.
But that's incredible because it shows that our QSR sales opportunity here is very strong. So that is a huge opportunity for us to say, actually, we do have the opportunity here for you to move your business if you are interested. So that kind of information is something that we were able to to provide.
We're just definitely not the typical market, you we don't have ten thousand rooftops, we don't have, you know, twenty thousand people within ten minutes of of a location. But what we do have is very unique and that's, we have an eighty mile service radius. We're the medical hub, people come here to shop, to receive their medical care. You know, to do everything that they need to do. And so and with that uh brings traffic. And so what Melissa had just mentioned, what we're able to do with Placer, we were looking at at a location uh on the east side of town. And Placer was also showing us how many, how many people was it? People cars coming to Fry's. There was one point two million cars that came to Fry's last year. And so if even if you get a fraction of that to visit the the proposed location of this national QSR. That that meets their development criteria right there. Because you're you're not seeing that kind of saturation in in a location down in the valley because there's so many more places to shop. And we we just, we don't have that here, so we're gonna see that that density here at one location.
We also don't have the competition.
Mm-hmm.
So we would give them exactly what they're looking for. Um so let's keep Globe growing. Key takeaways, um business growth is happening, we have three new businesses, seven expansions. We are seeing a strong local investment. Tourism is a major economic driver, we've seen a huge bed tax increase. Um the Michelson Building project is coming eventually. Um and it will transform our business landscape even further. Challenges remain, but we're tackling them head on by streamline meaning permitting, expanding commercial space options, and supporting workforce development. Um we're setting the stage for long-term success and we're taking action. Um we will increase business outreach, improve marketing up efforts, and continue measuring our our progress as we continue our momentum moving forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just wanna make a couple of comments, I wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce for all of the hard work uh working alongside you and from the region. Uh they're very instrumental, I know they're another uh information point and they do a fantastic job. I wanna make a comment, I'm not really bragging, but Mesquite Broad Street is the beginning of District Five. And if you and I love traveling every every evening downtown now. The shops or the parking places are full, the restaurants are busy, the theater is busy, it's hard to find parking just to go to lock a seat. The point I'm trying to make is that, well, I'll say it. Uh three newest businesses, two restaurants and a coffee shop are in District Five. So I'm not challenging you, I'm just saying, I'm just saying we're there in District Five. And that's one of the reasons I love to cruise District Five now, because I can always end up at a coffee shop or a restaurant that are are very, very good. I I missed a meeting with the mayor the other day, the first time I needed Copper City's coffee shop, so we got our times wrong. So I sat there for a half hour and I watched traffic walk into the coffee shop. I'd never been there before and I had some some Mexican. Coffee and it was just a really nice experience, it was just just really nice. So um kudos to your department for all the hard work you've done to project the City of Globe. And you can evidence that in the tourism and the numbers that are there for people coming up in spite of of very much under construction highway, they're still coming. And we're still a waypoint and the revenue is there. We can't go backwards anymore, we we are embracing our future. I remember the days when as a a single uh large entity drove our economy. And we did a lot of soul searching in the last thirty years, how are we gonna fix that? We can't rely on the ups and downs of that kind of an economy or an industry and we're we're changing that paradigm. Those are ten dollar words, meaning we're growing. And I wanna point that out, we're not. I still have the floor, sir. And we're not going back, we're addressing our future and the growth is is proving your point about improving our economy. So thank you for that, I'm done, Mike.
Thank you, Mariano.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to not uh reinforce to the council that the coffee with the mayor, we need to have less than four years.
Oh, I know.
Oh, yeah. We need not to get too anxious to participate.
Well, he's not. We're not there.
Fernando?
I'd like to point out to Councilman Gonzalez that Walmart now. Uh District Six.
Sounds like he is bragging just a little.
District six off of Peninsul.
Five million cars at Fry's. How do I I know that um part of what you do and part of what the Southern Hila County EDC does. Uh how are we, how do we kind of work together or how do we overlap or are we doing more than more their job or how how does that work?
No, we're we're a pipeline, absolutely, it you know, most most of the leads now are coming into the city. And that wasn't the case when when I started eight years ago here. It there wasn't that that information wasn't coming in here and so now now it is. And so that usually. And so that usually comes in and we it that begins in a PDM process or or text or call and we, you know, move it into the PDM. And so then we help them through through that development process to to get them to the point where they are opening up their. Their ah brick and mortar with the ribbon cutting and and I gotta just say shameless plug because those three businesses that are in District Five.
Yes, five.
First Friday vendors. Yeah, first Friday vendors, so I had to take that opportunity. But then, you know, once, once we get them up and going, then and and during that process, they may need some seed money, they may need some ah technical assistance. So then we tap in our partners, whether that be the SBDC or excuse me, the E the Southern Hila County EDC which. The EDC does have ah a small business loan program, it's a revolving loan program and they can borrow up to forty five thousand dollars. And we have a couple of of businesses that have taken advantage of that in recent years, ah Copper Cities. Oh no, excuse me, Copper Bean Coffee was one that that took advantage and so she just, Stacy and Ryan Murray just opened up their amazing new business. And so that's.
Copper Eagle is delicious.
Good plug and and then once, once they get up and going and they're in operations and then that. We tap in the chamber, so then they become chamber members and so then the chamber can help them promote their business, they can network. And and not just, not just these three organizations, but all the bed tax organizations that we see that are contributing to the economic development pipeline. Because there's opportunities to to work with museums like on big community events, for instance, the Dominion Days that's now shifted from September. To April and that's really taking off, I I really see that as becoming one of our signature events in the community. So I think now we are doing a much better job on. Knowing what lane that we're in and and how we can support one another. Because if if we're doing well, the EDC's doing well, the chamber's doing well and so it definitely. And the businesses, which is what is the most important.
And I have one more question, um so regionally, one thing I've always believed in my heart is that. If Miami does better, we do better, if we do better, Miami does better. But it feels like they could use some investment in that, especially the highway corridor, not even know if that's. Something that we can look at and see what we can do to create a synergy because I think if. When people come through town from the valley, as soon as they hit anything that resembles a city, that's all of us.
They don't know where Miami starts.
No, they don't, they don't know that in between is county and not Globe and not Miami and so. I just kind of would like to see us do a little bit more together and try to improve that.
I think one, one big win that that has come out of that regional effort is the Hila Proud Program. And so the county had had taken that and run with it for two years and then the EDC stepped in to to take it and run with it. And so that is, we've collect, well, through the program, there has been. Nearly fifty thousand tons of trash collected over the last two and a half years and so this program is growing. We've just received additional partners through the EDC, so I I think that that is, that is a very visual. Win for our communities, but I agree, there there always is opportunities for collaboration. And and there are things that don't fit in Globe as far as businesses or or um developments and it makes more sense to Miami, so. We we have um helped one another in that way.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick comments, um. My first one is I'd like to petition that we move downtown Globe to District One. And beyond that, um I think this data that, in all seriousness, the data that you're putting together, I know, uh Linda, you know, I. Over time, I've had numerous conversations about, you know, um you know, just just starting. Ah economic development engine in in the in the region and you know. I know it's been long painstaking, but it seems to me like it has just happened at lightning speed. This is really good information. All the numbers, all the matrix, all the data points that you provided are on the uptick. Um and that's, that's just fabulous, so ah great work to you and your team, the staff, um you know, Paul, you sharing this too. Um these are just good things to see and um it just proves the point that uh you know. There was a vision and and there was a commitment and it's it's um it's fruit, it's it's bearing fruit. Uh so great work ah to all the staff, everybody, anybody that has anything to do with this. Public work, so the police department, fire department, you know, it's, it's a, it's an engine that ah I I appreciate just um. Seeing it come to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Sounds like that was an emotion, Freddie.
I already talked about downtown Globe is moving.
Point of order, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, um one small tidbit ah out, was out at lunch today and for almost over an hour and. And I was surprised that I think over six, like I don't know what they are, but these people that are like Uber for food. You know, and they they'll, you call them up and they'll go get your. DoorDash, yeah, and I mean, and so. Um all of these, these restaurants, even you know, they have the the people who walk in, they do a lot of catering and and special events. Look, we were at Preport Event last week and and catered that. And then these people who just come in and you know, they come in, they're young, they're on their cell phone, they have a a insulated bag and they're just waiting for their food and boom, they go, but. I mean, that's, that's a good thing, that's more people eating out and it's a, you know, a side hustle for for these young people or people.
Honestly, Connie and I DoorDash way too much. Sometimes we don't go to lunch, we just keep working in DoorDash. It is.
And and we're encouraging our businesses to take, take advantage of DoorDash because some have been hesitant. And it's a way to expand your business without having to add additional overhead with staff.
You don't have to clean tables or anything.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Ah matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Ah public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item. For separate consideration. Members of the council and or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A. Consideration of waiver of section two dash four dash ten A, prior discussion ruled to allow action. Of the consent agenda. Ah A one accounts payable, six hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars and eighty cents. Ah A two, consideration of approval of council minutes. Ah A two one, consideration of the July twenty third, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
Vice Mayor, motion to approve is read.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, any abstaining? Motion passes. Ah under new business. Ah five A, consideration to approve resolution number nineteen oh one. Uncollectible water debt in the amount of three thousand three hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, Jody? Jody?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council.
Can you read the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution number nineteen oh one, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Globe, Hila County, Arizona. Providing for treatment of certain debts of the city which have been deemed potentially uncollectible. And removing same from the records as assets of the city of Globe and providing direction for future treat, for future treatment of same. Council pleased with the read?
Yes.
Good evening, Vice Vice Mayor and council members. Um it's already been a year. It's going by fast now. Um I am happy with our number tonight, three thousand three oh one sixty, that's, that's pretty nice. Um we haven't changed our procedures, everything is um. Is being handled the same, we we take our steps to try to collect, we send notices, we try to contact by phone. If we have a good forwarding address, we can um. The small claims summons and try to collect ah the money. This year we have ah, we are writing off twenty seven accounts, fourteen were renters, thirteen of those were homeowners. Um but this is, this is a pretty good number, it's lower than even last year, so I'm happy with that, I hope you're happy with that. So I'm just asking if we can move this forward to the next meeting and see if we can get this resolution passed so we can take care of these. And get them um removed from our, from our books.
No, the, I agree, those are great numbers.
Jesse?
On any given day, how many accounts do you, does the city have? Do you know off the top of your head?
About three thousand four hundred and sixty five.
So that is an amazing number.
Yeah, it's like a dollar.
That many accounts and you have three thousand three hundred and one dollars and sixty cents, your teams do an amazing job recouping those. And ensuring that the city retains those fees, so I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic job, Jerry, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I would move to move resolution number nineteen oh one forward to the next meeting for final reading, possible approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move this item ah to the next meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, any abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah item B. Consideration to accept number. GO S two five dash six seven dash zero five zero five three. The Arizona Complete Health for twenty five thousand dollars. To assist the city of Globe in building a community kitchen. Received through GL, number two zero dash four two. Dash zero nine zero three six, Arizona Complete Health Grant. We got Connie. Melissa Dye and Tina Brown.
And a big check.
Vice Mayor, council, you need to use, it's such an honor to have our partners up here from the valley. And um I'd like to put this under the category of great things that take time. Or the other category, build it and they will come, okay, so you have your choice, all right? So ah this twenty five thousand ah added to the twenty five thousand from Arizona Community. Ah Foundation together that we can leverage with already invested thirty two thousand nine hundred and some odd dollars. That the city of Globe invested in the foundational hookup and build of the said community kitchen. Um and by the way, just so that we can keep on track with a community kitchen. It will also help us with our community and our food insecurities that we do have. Um programming for that is endless, but in order to have the programming, we need the kitchen, so. This is one step in things that are gonna come. And ah these are our partners from Arizona Complete Health and I'm gonna turn it over to them. And then after that, ask Vice Mayor to come down for the check in the picture, okay?
There we go, you don't want to lose that.
Don't let it bounce.
Vice Mayor, Stapleton, members ah of the council, we are honored to be here, my name is Melissa Dye, I am the statewide administrator. For our our grant giving and um really ah Tina Brown, who is my colleague here and who represents ah Hila County on our team. Um is just really passionate about supporting this community and. Ah when this application came through, I I can tell you that um it got pretty ugly, she really wanted this money to come to you. And she fought for it really hard, it is a very competitive process, the sponsorship review committee. Really does a good job in in identifying ah those health outcomes and social determinants of health that are really important. For our industry in in healthcare, we are the largest Medicaid and Medicare um and marketplace ah health plan in in the state. So we take a lot of pride in how we give our ah community reinvestment dollars back to the communities. And a lot of our community relations representatives such as Tina, they're very passionate about ah really giving back and 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 fighting. For for monies to come to them, so this is a testament to that, um I know that we gave to the city of Globe for the swimming pool. And now we're very excited to be able to provide additional monies to help with the kitchen, thank you for your work with that, Connie. And um it's just a a really a great pride to be here, so thank you and it's really exciting to to hear about all of the great things that are happening. I I learned a lot just, you know, by sitting there and you have a great community to represent, Tina. And um I don't know if there is something that you would like to say?
I love Globe. I love Globe, I love, um I work a lot with Linda and Connie and then Robin on Freeport. Um so I love, they're they're my girls, so I love coming up here. And I represent all of Hila County, so I'm here in Globe Miami area and then also in Hason. And then we also supported the Community College nursing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robby.
It's funny, this dime has been here for like a month.
Oh, well.
We got a bunch of easy, glad of honest people. It wasn't my title.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to accept and approve the twenty five thousand dollar grant awarded. Number G O twenty five dash twenty five dash sixty seven dash zero nine oh three six from Arizona Complete Health. To assist the city of Globe in building a community kitchen project received through GL hashtag twenty dash forty two dash oh nine oh three six.
Second.
Have a question, is this a waive the rule?
We we're gonna, we will bring this money back to expend it in the future. And so um we we don't technically have to, but if you'd like to throw it in for good measure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would move the.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, any abstaining? Passes. Okay, item C, discussion and consideration for staff to advertise a request for statements of qualifications. Number PS dash two zero two five dash zero one four four. For on-call civil engineering and professional support services. To be funded out of account number ten dash six one dash five one two two five. Public work consultants. Number five zero dash eight zero. Dash five one two two five water consultants. And number five one dash eight zero dash five one two two five wastewater consultants. If possible with a reimbursement and or other identified funding sources through grants or loans. Reimbursements associated with the given task order, Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, we have a on-call for services um and for civil engineering and typically it's a three year period where you. You approve it the first year, renew it two years, ah currently we're in our renewal year of the current contract that we're under. Contract that we're under, but we're trying to reset that, uh try to get some more vendors on that list, so. We wanted to take it back out there, um start a new three-year period a year ahead of the. Previous contract, if that makes any sense. Um, just so we can get a few more vendors, uh and increase that threshold of the amount that we were asked for. We're finding out that we're running into um, that we do have a lot of projects under different grants and loans. Uh, and various other funding sources that we could utilize our on-calls and that eight thousand threshold that we have right now. Uh, we're hitting that with the current um vendors that we have, contractors. So um, that's why we wanna renew this, get it a fresh start. Bring that threshold up to a hundred and sixty five thousand. It doesn't mean that it's in the budget, it it just means that we can, if there is a budget for there, if there is a grant that's out there. We could utilize them to uh go up to that amount. State statute allows us go, any given contract go up to five hundred thousand for any consultant. And so over this three-year period, if we happen to max one out, it's four hundred and ninety five thousand, so we stay within the statute. And um, and that way you won't get in trouble with that. So if, if for your permission, if we can go out to bid, um take that out, our solicitation, take that out for solicitation. So we can renew that process and and have them ready for July first start date.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if there's no other questions or comments, a motion to approve is read.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Now it'll come back for the next meeting, that's what it's at.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come back for the awards, so we're, this is permission to go out to for for bid. Then we'll get the awards and then we'll uh uh, we'll accept those, so it will come back.
You're up next, Travis. Discussion and consideration for staff to advertise a request for statements of qualifications, number. P S dash two zero two five. Dash zero one four five for on-call survey, civil engineering, survey support services. To be funded out of account number ten dash six one dash five one two two five. Public works consultants. Number five zero dash eight zero. Dash five one. Two two five. Water consultants and number five one dash eight zero. Dash five one two two five wastewater consultants, where possible with a reimbursement. And or other identified funding sources through a grant or a loan, reimbursements associated with the given task order. Travis?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council, same concept, uh we're just trying to update our list, uh increase that threshold. Um, just because we keep running into uh the current threshold of eighty thousand, so bring it up to one sixty five for uh potential up to three years. But this is for surveying instead of professional services and engineering.
Motion to adjourn, Mr.?
Mr. Ve- uh Vice Mayor, I have to make a motion that we approve. Uh, request for statements of qualifications. Please present.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Thank you, Travis. Uh, next on the agenda is the action items, six A. Discussion and consideration to approve contract number C A. Dash two zero two five dash zero four eight. With Weber Water Resources in the amount of thirty two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. For the well three motor replacement. To be funded from account number five zero dash eight zero. Dash five five two zero zero one. Well and pump repair. Travis?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor and members of the council, I'm actually gonna turn this one over to Vince, cause he has more of the background and history of the pump.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. Yeah, um, so like you were saying, kind of the history of this well. Well, the the motor on it is what we're replacing. The motor's about twenty five years old. Um, they told me it's an old five oh eight frame, if that means anything to you. Um, but uh, so I was telling John that in my my seven years here, we've already rewound this motor four times. Seems like something's happening every two to three years on this thing. In seventeen, we did it, nineteen and twenty and now trying to do twenty four, twenty five, so. Um, we looked at rebuilding again, it was coming around twenty two thousand dollars to rebuild it. Um, we decided that spend the extra ten thousand dollars to buy a brand new motor on there to. Get us a longer life on it, so. That's kind of the histories of it, if we get approval, we're sixty eight weeks out, putting us right at the top of our high demand season, so. It's kinda needed, even with that well number four out right now, we can't have another well down, so. Asking for approval to purchase a new motor.
Freddie?
Um, so I was just a kid back then. But uh, on a serious note, uh you know, for a a motor to go out every three years is not typical. Um, and it has, has there been any uh calc loads done on on that particular well? You know, checking the uh the load ranges, the um, the pumping capacities, things like that, because. I'm just asking, because if there's, there's something that's not right, because that motor keeps going out every three years. It should, it shouldn't go out every three years.
I know what I, I was told that at one point it was put in kind of crooked and putting like stress on it. So, I don't know if that that ever got fixed, but. I don't think anyone's ever looked into that. But when we put the new one on, definitely, we have some professionals look at it.
I mean, if you can get sixty seven years, eh, it's okay, but. For it to go out every three years is not typical. It's just not typical.
Bad.
So there's, there's something stressing the motor.
And Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, is is it getting, is it sucking a lot of sand and getting uh.
No, not.
Or is it the, the motor electrically is is?
Yeah, it's the motor, not the pump, the pump seems to be doing well, it's just the, the top end on the motor.
And then the motor's on on the top side though?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Engineering firm or a Safney in in, you know, waterworks that can do that, may maybe even the the company that uh. You know, this Weber Water Works, they they might be able to help out in.
They've been helping us a lot on this one, I think since I started working here, they've been pretty heavily involved with this one.
I mean, I know of them, they're they're, you know, I I know the company, um, and they'd be more than willing to sell you a motor every three years.
Well, we haven't bought one in the past twenty five years.
I think, I I I would just impress on your team to just. Discussion about, you know, what what really is causing us, what's failing, no, don't just replace it, what is actually failing, is it a bearing?
Well, that's what started, it was.
Locking up, you know, things like that.
Right. So that's what started, we heard uh our our master mechanic out there heard the top bearing going out. So then we looked into it, they cooled it, they said the windings were out, so.
Yeah.
Kind of description for windings, there's copper coils in there.
Yeah.
And there's a magnet that spins around and if there's a dead spot on the coils, it causes imbalance, so then it wears on the bearings. And then next thing you know, you got bearings going out, then.
Well, and even the pump itself could be stressing the motor. If the pump isn't designed to work. At that motor, so.
We'll look into it.
Definitely something to look at. And I'm glad that you're doing it before the summer hours, I mean, the summer peak, cause. That's when everything's gonna be running full bore.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to have some kind of an engineering consultant come in, review what's going on with those motors? Brett? If you've got some doubt about the the company that's selling.
Well, I I'm not, I don't doubt the company, I just, you know, what, I I, it's just very curious to me that a motor goes out every three, every two, three years. Um, and I'm saying that because I'm experiencing the same problem with one of my wells. And so, you know. We're gonna take a step back a little bit and and see if we can't. You know, run calc loads again and and get with the vendor and say, okay, you know, what does manufacturer say about this? You know, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's just the approach we're gonna take, because we're experiencing the same thing. So something's stressing it.
Right.
There's no doubt.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I I think, like I say, we can take a a closer look, at least initially with with our on. People on staff and and with our consultant and then see if we can track down something, also some of the history on the pump and just make sure that. That everything's, you know, uh all the the pieces are there, there's not something we missed, but John, go ahead.
Yeah, Vice Mayor and council members, um, one thing I would just add on the historical part of it, just like Vincent says, some of the things we're looking at. This always goes back to the preventive maintenance part of it, where we've looked at the flash protection, you know, program that we need to have in place. We've actually done some background on this as far as uh, for a while there, we're having some issue when we had APS come out. Check lines, cause we're having some surges going on out there, so that was a concern. And even some of the maintenance that Vince has actually worked into our budget now and continue to do. Is that same type of maintenance, because we're finding with the motors and everything, as you know, people don't think about it, but the electrical connections with the vibration. They come loose, and that even puts a quick surge when they're turning on and off. And if they're turning on during the cycle, that that trips them, so we've had anywhere from cooling, we've done upgrades to cooling the systems. And those pumps out there, cause they were overheating, so there is some of that kind of like you're mentioning. And some of that's kind of what we're, some of the stuff that we're looking at.
Yeah, it's good.
Um, so we still need to buy this motor, I would assume. So I would, I would move. With contract number C A dash two zero two five dash zero one four eight with Weber Water Resources in the amount of thirty two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the well three. Motor replacement to be funded from account number five zero dash eight zero dash five two zero zero one and well pump and repair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Any abstaining? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, John. Uh, next on the agenda is uh late agenda items.
Yes, and Mr. Vice Mayor, we have no late agenda items.
Okay, next on the agenda is uh the second call of the public. We have any cards or anybody online?
No, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor.
No?
Let me look real quick. Nothing in the.
Uh, next is scheduling of meetings.
So, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, um, we uh, like I said, this year we're doing a standalone uh trip to DC. To um, check in on our federal legislative agenda, uh requests that are in process, new requests. And and just contacting agencies, our congressional delegation, uh that is scheduled to uh fly out on twenty fifth. Um, trip on the twenty sixth and fly back on the twenty seventh, but it does fall on our regular scheduled um, March twenty fifth council meeting, so. Uh, in order to, we do have some items, I think, not a lot, but a couple that need to happen. And so we were looking to reschedule, move that meeting ahead to the Thursday before March twentieth at six o'clock, oh, that's right.
I won't be here.
Yes.
No.
And we we were, we were thinking about doing it on a Monday, but everybody cringes on the Mondays are tough, just because. Mondays are tough, so, but it's council preference, I don't know, we we didn't. Yeah.
Any day works for me.
What's the date?
It's a Thursday, the twentieth.
Thursday?
I'm good.
We'd like to be at nighttime meetings instead of replacing a regular scheduled meeting. Don't like to do Fridays. It'd be, if we go any earlier than Thursday, it's gonna be kind of crunch to get the, everything together.
Do you have to have whatever's on your, whatever the couple items that you have to have?
Um, let us, let us play it by ear, I, if they're not ready, the the one, I I do wanna get the um. Uh, started on the the renewal, the the trash contract, the our solid waste contract, if that's gonna happen, but um, let me, let me see if we can.
And if it's gonna be three or five item, items, why couldn't we do? An earlier meeting, why does it have to be a six?
Yeah, we um, I I think, I I think with, with a, replacing a regular meeting, we wanna replace at the same time. But let us, let us look at this and see if we can't even push it um, back on to, what is it, April first, or is it?
I I'm available all of a sudden, that whole day.
Okay, on the Tuesday, let me look real quick. Yeah, if, if we can, if if there's a way that, I mean, we can just cancel it, we can, we can do that, but um. I just wanna make sure that we can hit our marks.
What about the week of the twenty fourth through the twenty eighth?
That's when they're gonna be.
Yeah, that's what we'll be traveling.
You guys are gone.
Yeah. So.
So can we bring it back to first of April or is it?
Yeah, let's do it April Fool's Day.
Yeah.
We could, we can do that and just have, we'll have back-to-back at that point. Okay.
We can wear our, our hats or something, you know. Probably with our suits.
Yeah, well, let's, let's see. We need a quorum, right? I mean, again, you know, councilmen's, lead them in in Stapleton, if they're not available, we'll still have a quorum.
And the mayor will be, you know.
It will, it will be the um H pack also. So the H pack.
You have to be here.
Interviews.
I have to be here.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, I, I think we wanna try to get, so if we can't, I, like I say, I I don't think it's, like I say, we we try to make it available so every council member can be there. Let us, let us look at everything and see, and we may just have a really long one on the eighth.
Great.
Thank you.
Working out, Paul.
Okay. What's that?
He's he's gone on the eighth.
Where you gone on the eighth? Oh, no. Guys, okay, all right, so we'll leave it undef, we'll undetermined, but let us um.
We'll come up with a date.
We'll come up with a date. And Shelly will check.
We do need to, we do need to reschedule the March twenty fifth though, because that's, we we will not be here, so we need to just say.
Well, we, we, okay, so, yeah, so a motion to to cancel the March twenty fifth and possibly reschedule.
Motion to cancel if possible.
Yeah, reschedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is future agenda items.
And this to the, to the council, if there's anything you've been um wanting to um add on there for the the next meeting, which we don't know when it'll be.
We don't know when that will be.
Kind of like the Twilight Zone.
It's just, it's just out there somewhere.
Okay, then uh, do I have a motion to go on to each session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing? Any abstaining?
Mr. Vice Mayor, there will be no additional action coming out of E session other than.